Good evening. It is 7:05, and I'm sorry we're a little late getting started here. We are mean and lean this evening. We have standing in for Jeff Hall, who's enjoying some vacation, our Assistant Town Manager, Kendra Amroth. Glad to see you Kendra. Also present are Selectwoman O'Connell and Selectman McCoy. Selectman Newhouse was traveling with family and could not make it back. And Selectman Semaglia is dutyfully working in his capacity as Veterans Agent this evening and couldn't make it as well. So if we could all stand, I will lead, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother who has established our nation, our God, and our soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have some minutes to approve. They are the minutes of, I'm sorry, let's approve the Treasury Warrants first, shall we? Treasury Warrants number three, 3A, four, 4A, five, 5A, six, and 6A. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? And there are minutes to approve from December 15th of 14, June 8th of 15, and July 13th of 15.
So moved.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. And the sole but very important appointment for this evening is with our own Selectwoman Judith O'Connell, Chairman of the Yentile Farm Development Committee, to update us on the process and the project status of Yentile Farm. Ms. O'Connell, looking forward to hearing from you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'm going to pass over some handouts just to pass along the front table here. And at this time, I'd like to thank you, as well as the members of the Board, for inviting us to give a presentation this evening. I'd also like to thank Town Manager Jeffrey Hall, as well as Assistant Town Manager Kendra Amroth, for assisting me in preparing for tonight's presentation. I'd also like to acknowledge some audience members, which is our Vice Chairman Kevin Kira, as well as a committee member Edward Loud. And I wanted to thank the overall committee in general. The Yentile Farm Development Committee has been working for the last several years on this project. And certainly, I have the pleasure of speaking to you this evening, but I am part of a very extended team, which includes a full array of Town Hall personnel, as well as community folks that have a vested interest in seeing this project be very successful. So getting right into the presentation, I wanted to thank Kendra for assisting me with this. I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the key component areas, design, permitting, fundraising, the donor plan specifically, and the timeline. And I'm going to take those up individually. I wanted to just show you overall, this is from the Town Meeting, 3D renderings that people had the good fortune of seeing. This shows you the actual project itself here, just to remind people what the sole purpose of this project is, is to design a 20-acre parcel of land in Wilmington, about half of that is developable. And we'll talk to you as to where we stand today, as of August 10th, 2015. So specifically getting into the design, the design has been working on the design development phase with the committee for quite some time now. This phase will be wrapped up in September of 2015, and the committee overall has made decisions on critical design features. As you can see, the top upper left, we've made decisions relative to the pavilion, the concession stand, the bathrooms and storage facility. Moving down to the lower left, you'll see the bench configuration that we've selected, the game tables to the center. The upper right shows the lighting for the park itself. As you move down to the bottom right mid-center is the trash receptacle and recycle receptacles and the bike rack down below. And then to the far bottom right is the lighting for the parking lot. So some of the things that we talked about were the pavilion and concession, aesthetics and layout, the lighting design, planting selections, the pedestrian bridges over the rain gardens, site furniture such as the benches, game tables, picnic tables, and bike racks that I talked to you about, the playground layout, the surface materials for paths in the playground area, and the lighting configuration. Just so you know why we chose the lights that we did, the parking lights offer more light and they're more efficient in the actual pathway. Ambient lighting is the upper right there, which allows for lighting in the pathways. So we definitely wanted to make sure that we had a very safe and illuminated site for people to navigate through. The design has been reviewed internally by our Technical Design Review Committee, which includes engineering, planning, the Building Department, health, public works, and public safety. The committee has been engaging in an ongoing value engineering process to get the design cost down to about $4.8 million, which is the target that was set at Town Meeting. And the budget has been trimmed by over $400,000 without losing any programs or quality to the project. And we expect that the next updated cost estimate will be on target. The next phase of design is construction documents, which will commence once permitting is complete, and is anticipated to be completed by mid-September of 2015. So if you look here for the permitting timeline, you'll see in August of 2015, we've completed the Conservation Commission permitting, we've completed the design development phase. For September through December of 2015, the construction drawing phase will begin, and we will be applying for an earth removal permit application with the Board of Selectmen, so we expect to be seeing you within the next couple of months. January to February of 2016, the bid construction and the awarding of a contract will be done. March of 2016, the construction will begin, and the construction is anticipated to be completed by June of 2017, with most of the work being completed in 2016, though some final plantings and finishings may need to occur in spring of 2017, depending on the weather. So moving on to the fundraising, just so you can see this in more detail, a subcommittee was formed to help sort out the fundraising program for the project. Through their efforts, a nonprofit was formed, and a donor plan has been developed that outlines the monetary giving levels sought for various components. The committee developed an outreach plan and has started the design of a website for fundraising. I have passed out the donor plan to all of you in more detail. I'm not going to read that into the record for the public, but I just want to say at a very high level that the donation opportunities range from $250,000, which would be for the turf field sponsorship, to a entry-level donation level of $125 for engraved bricks. The committee sought to ensure that there are opportunities for donors of all means to contribute, to be part of the project. So moving on to the grant piece, I wanted to let you know that additionally, the town has applied for the park grant, which is offered through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The maximum award is $400,000, and we are one of 44 applicants. Grants are scored based on a system of points related to the goals of the park program, and decisions about the grant recipients are expected to be released in October or November of this year. Wanted to share with you that Assistant Town Manager Kendra Amroth, as well as Planning and Conservation Director Valerie Gingrich, put in consistent and dedicated hours to get that application submitted. They also did do a recent site visit. Certainly, I don't want to over-convey that and indicate to the public that means that we're going to be selected, but I just want to say that that's a positive sign, that they sought fit to come out to the site and actually take a closer look at Nine Cross Street. So hopefully, we will be the beneficiary of some monetary grant, but it's to be determined. And I just want to step back to share with you that the fundraising piece, it's a separate nonprofit that's headed up by Ed Rixton's. Kevin Kira and Ed are on that committee as well. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, I am not taking an active role in that separate fundraising initiative, but I can't say enough about all the work that these two gentlemen, as well as all the other members of the fundraising committee have done thus far. It's headed up by Ed Rixton's, but I will tell you that it's certainly a total team effort. These members feel very confident that they can spearhead a private fundraising effort that will include reaching out to residents, local businesses, and organizations for support of the project. And I just wanted to remind all of you, as well as the community, that their fundraising goal is $1 million, which in my opinion is a very ambitious goal. And if I were to think of a group of people that could make that happen, these are the people that would come to mind. So I wanted to thank you publicly for taking on that effort. And then moving into the timeline for the project, the construction documents phase will begin in the coming weeks. This phase will include the development of a detailed drawings and specifications for every element of the project. The committee expects to meet periodically throughout this phase to ensure costs remain on target and to continue to provide guidance on the design. I wanted to remind you that the project is expected to be bid in 2016 with a contract award in February of 2016. And just want to reiterate again that the construction will begin in March or April of 2016, which will take approximately one year to complete. And as I indicated before, most of the work will be completed in 2016, with some finished work in 2017. So that's kind of a quick summary. I wanted to try and be as succinct as possible for the purposes of this evening. Once again, I wanted to thank the Board, also wanted to thank the committee, and certainly, last but not least, I wanted to thank the residents of Wilmington. This all would not be happening without the continuous support of the residents at Town Meeting to see fit to give us the appropriation and the monetary amounts that we've received thus far. And we're excited about the project. We feel confident that we will be delivering a product to the community that you all can be proud of, and that will certainly be a land for all ages that all of us can enjoy. So at this time, I'd like to close out and say thank you once again, and open it up to the Board for any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you. Great, great presentation. Very succinct, but comprehensive at the same time, so I appreciate that very much. Well, I have two quick questions, and then I'll certainly offer it up to Mr. McCoy. Forgive me, just because I can't remember from previous documents, is the athletic field going to be lit as well, it's a night use field as well?
Yes.
It is, okay. And your timeline, maybe it was there and I just didn't see it. Excuse me. The timeline for the donation information getting out to the public so that people can start to make those donations, when do you plan to make that, I guess, public?
Any feedback from you two gentlemen this evening? Just want to recognize through you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kira, and Mr. Loud.
I believe September, January, then we're going to launch.
Okay. September of 2015.
It'll be very public.
I would expect it would be.
And that's a good thing. So fall of this year, watch for emails and websites and all the other media.
Indeed, and thanks for bringing to the attention that Kevin and Ed are here. Thank you guys for your involvement, and everyone on the committee as well. I think it's, to me, it's a testament to what teamwork can do, and I'm so excited that this is clearly going to be a flagship facility within our town. It will be how we are known, I think, by our neighbors and surrounding communities once it's established and in place. So thank you Judy, for all the hard work that you're doing on the committee as well. Mike, please.
Yeah, thank you. Pretty much echo what the Chairman had to say. Can't really add much more than that. Not going to ask any questions, but the comment, I think Judy, you've done a fantastic job cheering the members in getting this off the ground. Obviously, you can't do anything without the memberships, and you've got outstanding members. And once again, as you stated, you've got to be very grateful for the citizens who put the bill in this community that came forward and supported it, because not only are we looking at a field, and I think the feeling out there is that folks want to be able to do something for all ages, young and through senior citizens. And that's the one thing that we've got to keep on stressing, to hopefully satisfy multiple folks that are out there. And I support the project, and I think someday it's going to come to fruition, and I think it's going to be fantastic and wonderful. Thank you.
I appreciate the kind words. I just want to reiterate that, you know, I get the pleasure of getting the compliments publicly, but this is definitely a team situation here. I have a tremendous amount of help. And I will tell you that even just as recently as the conservation permitting, we were issued the permit in the second meeting, and that's a credit to the work that's been done by Jeff and by Kendra, DPW specifically, Jamie and Michael Woods, Paula Looney in the engineering, Winifred McGowan, Valerie Gingrich, I'm certainly sure I've failed to mention someone, Green International, who is our partner on this. And there were a lot of things that could be done offline before we even got to the meeting, and there were changes to plans and specs, things that could be done, so that we were able to get that permit in a very short period of time. They issued the permit pretty instantaneously, went through all the proper advertising and the proper meeting structure that you needed to get the permit. But I will tell you, there was very little discussion at those meetings, and certainly we're following all the rules at the local, state, and federal level. But as you know, we have two major highways, we have some wetlands in that area, we've worked through with the Army Corps of Engineers, and I think everything is going as well as can be expected in light of a very lengthy project. So we're very pleased. And the biggest pillar of this project that I feel in conjunction with the completion of design and starting construction is really going to be that fundraising piece. That's the one piece that we really need to start to ramp up, and I'm very pleased with the team that's agreed to take that on. So thank you.
Indeed. No, thank you. The additional comments were absolutely worth making, especially with regards to the Conservation Commission and getting the permitting in place. And again, it speaks to what teamwork can accomplish. So thank you again for all your hard work. Kendra, did you have more to offer on this subject at all? Or no?
No, I think Judy did a great job covering it.
Yeah, indeed. I agree. Thank you very much, Selectwoman O'Connell, for your work and for your presentation. Thank you guys for coming as well. With that closed, I will hand the ball over to Kendra to start the process of going through our communications.
Thank you. So we're going to go through the communications really quickly. First is a communication to the Chairman regarding the Legislature's override of the Governor's veto of kindergarten funding. As some of you may be aware, the Governor had vetoed the kindergarten expansion grants, which many communities, including ours, had expected. He supported an override of that veto, as well as the other members of our delegation, and we appreciate that. So Senator Tar letting us know his support for that override. We do expect that we are going to have to plan for no grants for this coming fiscal year budget development, but it is good to have that funding, whereas we had expected it for this fiscal year.
Indeed. Thank you.
Next is, again, from Senator Tar to Secretary Beaton at the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, writing in support of our park grant application for the Yentile Farm recreational facility, as Selectman O'Connell talked about. We do appreciate his support of that grant application and hope that we will be successful. And having his strong support is always good.
Indeed. Thank you to Senator Tar for that.
Absolutely. Next is correspondence from Deborah Boyce from Mass Development. This is regarding a public hearing that will be taking place on August 13th at 9:00 a.m. in Boston, and it is for funding that Leahy Clinic is looking to do through Mass Development. It's loans that they're looking to seek through the state to do facelifts of various facilities around the state that Leahy controls, one of which is in Wilmington. This is just part of the process they need to go through in order to get that funding and to enter into and utilize that program through Mass Development. So anyone interested in attending, again, it's August 13th, 9:00 a.m., 28th State Street in Boston.
Thank you.
Next is a memorandum from Town Engineer Paula Looney, giving the Board an update on the Butters Row culvert replacement project. This project started actually last week and should be completed by the end of this week. And it includes the replacement of the culvert over at Butters Row, and what you have included is information about the detour routes and the communication that's been going out. I do want to point out, our Public Works Department is doing a phenomenal job in terms of communication with the residents. You'll note in the memo that they've done everything from reverse 911s to people impacting the area. They're doing project updates on our website and utilizing our Twitter account, so they really have done everything they can to get the word out, and I think it's been appreciated. This is for your information.
I'm actually impressed with the turnaround of the project. It seems like it's going very rapidly, which is good news, I'm sure, for the residents.
Yes. Next is a memorandum from Town Manager Jeff Hall to the Board regarding the Siting Board Public Hearing that occurred in Drake it for the Kinder Morgan Pipeline. The memo outlines what mainly the public comments were about at that meeting, as well as what his comments were. He made specifically three comments at this meeting. The first was that Kinder Morgan had not made official their rerouting that they had verbally agreed to do for the town of Wilmington. They didn't make their rerouting official until July 24th, which was barely a week before this hearing. So Mr. Hall made an appeal to the EFSB to hold off on making any decisions or to extend their deadline to get public comment, because we have not had a chance to fully review what they've submitted. Second comment was to note that Kinder Morgan had not followed up on providing the town with additional information that it had sought as far back as April on routing under quarries. That information was not received until July 21st, and it was not a sufficient amount of information for the town to evaluate, so we raised that concern. And then third, he raised the concern that their new route does get near wetlands, buffer zones in our groundwater protection district, and there is a concern about the negative impact that route will have on those protected areas. Next phase of the process is the FERC Public Hearing. FERC is actually the federal level for the permitting process. That will also be taking place at Drake it High School on August 11th at 7:00 p.m., and the town will have representation there as well. Any questions?
I don't necessarily have questions. I'm going to make every effort to try to go to that meeting as well, just as eyes and ears. I know we will have professional representation there as well, but as this is marching forward, I'm evolving in my opinion of this project and becoming less and less favorable on it. In fact, I would dare to say I'm becoming increasingly unfavorable of it. I think that it's an ill-conceived project, and it ought not be going through our community at all. And I hope that as we continue marching forward, that we can find a way to get Kinder Morgan to either move their route or in some other way, find Wilmington not involved in this project, because I don't see how they can, to me, there's no route that seems favorable. And I think at some future Selectman meeting, I think we ought to have a substantive conversation about this with additional information. And Jeff and I have talked about that a little bit, so maybe in the next coming weeks, especially after tomorrow night's meeting with FERC, we can get that on the schedule and talk about it a little bit.
Sounds great.
I'd like to just reiterate that I would be in agreement with that.
Okay.
Because, you know, I have concerns as well, and I think that if we could have a more comprehensive discussion and perhaps have, you know, Paula Looney and some other members that have been at those meetings to give a more detailed update. I think the town continues to be vigilant and be an active participant, but I think overall as a Board, I think we want to really stay involved in the project timeline as well.
I think to date, we haven't really taken an official position on the project, and we may want to start to consider doing so. So again, I want to do so with all the information that is available, so we can make an educated position.
Right.
But yeah, I agree. Thank you for that suggestion.
And then, you know, we would have the full compliment of the Board.
Of course, yes.
So, thank you.
Great. Next is a memo from Town Manager Jeff Hall to the Board updating you on the Facility Master Plan process. As you recall, in your Town Meeting, approved funding for us to start a Facility Master Plan effort. The purpose is to really help us get a handle on the facility issues that we need to address, have an opportunity to prioritize them in a way that makes the most sense to meet all the needs and to make sure that it's as financially sound as possible. The funding was for $150,000 to hire a consultant to help us go through this. What Mr. Hall's purpose with this memo is to give you an update on where we are with that, and so I'm just going to give you the highlights of this. A committee is being formed. It's going to be the Facilities Master Plan Committee. It will include members of the Permanent Building Committee, which also include the Superintendent of Public Buildings George Hooper, Valerie Gingrich, who is our Planning and Conservation Director, Superintendent of Schools Mary Delai, and the Town Manager's office. Those will be the key people on the committee. However, there is a full expectation that there will be a number of stakeholders who will be involved throughout the process, from all of our various departments, residents, organizations, and others who use town facilities and who seek town facilities in order to do the business of the town, as well as what they're doing. So this is a very important process. What we are doing is really trying to look at this to extend beyond what the most talked about need seems to be, because there are a lot of needs out there. There are a lot of balance needs out there. Everything from our seniors to our administrative facilities, both the Roman House and Town Hall, to the places where we support recreational programs, we support library programs, our DPW, garages, and public safety. So there really is a broad need, despite the fact that sometimes the conversation gets pointed in one particular place or another. What we're going to do with this is bring the committee together in September. We will be releasing a request for proposals for the consultant, who will help walk us through that. That request for proposals has already been drafted and is being reviewed now. We expect to release that at the end of August and have someone under contract within about four to six weeks thereafter. The Facilities Master Plan Committee will be the ones selecting and recommending the consultant, and I think that's important, because these consultants you have to have a good relationship with. And so making sure that they've identified who they want to have that relationship with to work with will be very important. From there, we expect to do a very broad public input phase through the end of December. I think as an organization, we've shown we can be pretty successful at that with what has been done with the Yentile Farm project. We expect to do something as robust as that, to really gather public input, gather input from the departments, gather input from the school committee and the families in town, as well as the businesses and organizations. At the beginning of 2016, we'll start devising a plan, drafting it out, and coming up with some scenarios, some options, things that can include the surplus of the purchase of property, the reuse or repurposing of buildings, the renovation rehab, or the decommissioning of buildings and the building of new. We're going to try and cost that out in big dollar figures. It's not going to be down to the penny, but really going to give us a sense of sort of ballpark what any of these projects will be, and then phase them out so that it makes sense and it fits with our financial planning and our financial expectations. A draft will go out. We will be seeking public comment. We expect to be doing presentations before many boards and commissions, including this board, as well as probably the Planning Board, possibly ZBA, as well as some others. There will likely be some zoning that will come out of this, as well as some policy decisions, and then drafting, doing a final draft, a final review, and then seeking endorsement from the Board of Selectmen. Along with this, we will also be doing the senior housing part of this project, which was brought up and supported very strongly at Town Meeting. That will be done concurrently with, there's a lot of opportunity for synergy there, as well as something that really needs to be focused on its own. So Valerie Gingrich, who is on the Facilities Master Plan Committee, will be heading up that process. Her short-term goals are to identify potential parcels in town that could be surplus and RFP'd for small senior housing projects. And those senior housing projects would likely be things where you're developing a single-story home, maybe one bedroom and a study, or two bedrooms, homes that have been designed really to ensure people with mobility challenges or otherwise can be comfortable in there. So really the kind of design that will meet seniors' needs. As part of our public input process, we will also be focusing on senior needs, because there is a question as to whether or not it's a housing stock issue. If it's a location issue, is the housing not in a place where they can be supported? Are there not the services they need that make it a challenge for their seniors to stay in Wilmington? So we don't really have detailed answers to that. So we need to go through that process and find out what is needed. And then she's going to look at some potential zoning, changes that might help promote senior housing development on the private side, as well as whether or not, again, we should surplus or can surplus some town properties to a developer who will be able to do housing the way we want it to be done. We won't manage the housing, but these projects will be put out in a way that restricts them to certain design features. And then in the long term, looking at what we can do for a larger housing supply possibility, a larger housing supply project. So what can we do with zoning? What can we do with town parcels and other parcels to promote that? So those will be going on concurrently, and lots of opportunity for overlap and informing on each side.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say I'm really glad to hear that, because I know there was a big discussion, and I spoke on that, and I'm really glad to see that, you know, some folks out there, you know, is going to try to see what we can do to help seniors, because once again, many of those seniors in that room voted for that new high school, voted things for the kids in this community. So I, you know, can't see why we can't do something for senior citizens. I'm sure that we all feel that way. And I'm really glad to see us moving forward in that, and I just hope we, you know, just don't talk the talk. We actually do something about it. And I'm going to be on top of it.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd also like to just add a comment, if I may, is just my public support of this entire endeavor across both parts. I think it's so critical. I think this is probably one of the most critical exercises that this town, as a municipality, will do in the next year or so. Where do we want to be? Who do we want to be in the next five to 10 years? And I think in order to be successful in any project, you need to take the time to step back and properly plan and take current inventory, as well as look at your fiscal landscape. And I think this will allow us the opportunity to do that. And obviously, the Assistant Town Manager did an excellent job in concisely conveying this to the public, but this is a very detailed memo to the Board that really talks about the scope of the work, the planned scope of work for both of those avenues to explore. And I would agree with my colleague, Mr. McCoy, on the senior housing piece, but I think overall, you know, there are going to be some future needs, and we have a certain budget that we need to work within, and I think this will give us a good roadmap to plan against and try and achieve. So I just want to publicly convey my support for this in a very big way.
Thank you, Selectwoman O'Connell. I couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more. A couple of phrases in this that jumped out, really in the context of, I think, many folks may feel like, oh, you know, that we're looking at, I forget what the timeline was, but we're looking at sometime in 2016, May to September of 2016 is when a Facilities Master Plan draft would be proposed. So that's some time away. So, you know, it's going to take some time to amass the data and then sift through that data and determine what it tells us. And I think there might be some impatience, for lack of a better word, or anxiety about, geez, we want to just get there and get some work done. But it's important, and the phrase that I highlighted here was that we make the most informed and financially effective decisions for the next 10 to 20 years. It would be easy to look at a building and say, we need to fix that situation, and knee-jerk to expend time, energy, money, and resources to that one facility without paying attention to how or what effect that would have on the grand, the whole spectrum of things. And I think slowing ourselves down here and following this detailed process will allow us to make much more educated and purposeful and strategic decisions going forward, even though it might be yet still a year and a half away. So I just want people to be patient in the process. Really, that's all I wanted to come out of this with is, thank you very much Kendra for making the presentation. I too fully support the process in all aspects of it. I just ask for the public to be patient and allow the process to work through, and we will indeed be more than just talk, there will be action when we get to the end of this.
And I do want to, if I may, just point out that I know the school committee has talked about this, and we appreciate that the school committee is also committed to this process. It will be very important that they are active and engaged in this effort because it's going to impact schools as well as municipal buildings, and we have to approach it as a team as opposed to separate. So we appreciate their commitment to this process.
Always. Thank you.
Okay. Next is a communication from Archbishop Sean O'Malley. Thank you. Sean O'Malley inviting the selectmen to a mass on Sunday, October 4th, at 11:30 AM at the Cathedral of the Holy Cross. This mass is being celebrated for those who serve our communities as public safety personnel.
I hope to be able to attend that on behalf of Wilmington. I'll confirm that as it gets closer, but it's my intention.
Great, thank you. And that concludes communications.
So we do have a few board to consider items. Number six on our agenda is a board to consider the request of Gigi Shamujiyan that Wilmington Town Common be illuminated in pink during the month of October in observance of breast cancer awareness. Do you want to speak to that at all?
Absolutely. So we've reviewed this. All of our DPW is supportive, is in support of this. It's another opportunity to really highlight an issue going on for folks that touches so many. I do know there's been questions about the gels. I believe Gigi has donated the gels, so that gives, you know, the opportunity to really bite things up in the color that she's seeking without having to pay for the gels on this side.
The gels are the filters that go inside the, okay.
Yep, that turn the lights pink.
Got it. Sorry, pardon my lighting ignorance. That's wonderful. So that being said, is there a motion to approve this request?
I move that we grant the request as presented by the chairman. Thank you.
Seconded. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the point?
I just think it's very fitting and appropriate, and, you know, obviously, this letter is well-written by Gigi, and, you know, it indicates here that after five years, she gave herself a party, after 10 years, she took a trip, and for 15 years, she's looking to light up the common. And I think we wish her well, as we do anyone that is winning the battle with breast cancer as well as any other cancer that affects our loved ones. So I think this is fantastic, and I would wholeheartedly support it.
You're here. Yep. Well said. Thank you, Judy. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks to the town for making arrangements for that as well. Number seven is a board to consider signing the Third Amendment to the Regulatory Agreement for Whispering Pines. I'll ask Assistant Town Manager Kendra Amaral to highlight this for us.
So this agreement is, along with our efforts to help this project get going, what, after having been in a little bit of a stalled phase, so what this amendment does is it brings the affordable unit count down from 30% to 25% for the second building. Just in terms of hard numbers, that means from seven units required to five units required. It also just notes who the new owner of the property is and who will be taking the project forward, which is Lebers Brook Development LLC. This has been approved through ZBA already, and what we are seeking is just signature on the agreement so that it can go forward and be recorded and proceed.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we grant the request as described by the Assistant Town Manager.
Motion is made.
I'll second that.
And seconded. Other questions or commentary on this?
Do you know, and I apologize, I did read through this, but it's quite substantial. How many active units are there that still need to be sold? Does anyone know? And I don't mean to spot you with this question.
I know almost ZBA, they had all of the first buildings sold, according to when we met with them.
Yeah, is it?
When we met with them, the first building, which has been occupied, is all sold.
Okay.
They resold a couple of them.
Yeah.
Is it 24? Let's see if I can see it.
It's 24 and then the second building is 24.
Okay. And so there were going to be 14 affordable units, and by virtue of this agreement there, that would be 12 in the new construction.
For the total project.
For the total project. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, did you seconded that, Judy?
I did.
Okay. So motion is made and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Kendra. You can be in.
Next on the agenda is a board to consider executing the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wilmington and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1370 for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018. This is, I guess, codification of the contract that we discussed in executive session over the course of the last, I guess, several months. I'll allow Kendra to go through the bullets if she cares to.
Sure. So just a quick summary of what this contract does. It does six things in terms of changes from the prior contract. First, we're amending the residency requirements under civil service. Blanket is MGL across all civil service departments. You have to live within 10 miles of the border of the community and its calculated door-to-border. Changes were made in the legislation a couple of years ago that allowed municipalities to negotiate that at a local level. So we have done that. It is now going to be for this group, if signed, 10 miles from border to border, and we've incorporated into the contract a list of acceptable communities. Our firefighters and police officers, upon being appointed, within nine months and for thereon after, as long as they're appointed, must live in one of these communities in order to be compliant. The next is we establish an administrative schedule for employees put on paid administrative leave. This is important for the fire department because they're 24-hour shifts, they're four and two, so they're 24 on, one off, 24 on, and it's difficult to schedule appointments if you need them to have a physical evaluation or otherwise on that type of schedule. So what we're getting out of this is the ability to put them on an administrative schedule Monday through Thursday during normal business hours, so we can schedule them for what we need to. The next allows firefighters to take vacation between December 15th and 31st. We have good controls in the contract language already to control how many are out on vacation and how they go out on vacation, so we felt like this, there would be no harm in removing this, allowing people to take vacation in those last two weeks of the year. The next is amending our flexible spending program. This is an employee benefit that we provide. Right now, we do it all very paper-based. What we're looking to do is go to a debit card system and have the employees share the costs with us. Currently, the town pays for the entire cost of administration, so this will get it to a more modern system, which will hopefully be a better benefit, and they will also contribute to the cost of it. Next is the amendment of the education incentive. Currently, the firefighters can achieve an education incentive based on credits for accepted coursework at the college level. What we're doing is grandfathering that and making it that going forward for new employees, you have to achieve a full degree in order to get the education incentive. And we do also up the value of those education incentives. So as you know, we're becoming as much an emergency medical response operation as we are a fire response, so there is some real value in having our firefighters educated in things such as nursing or emergency medical responding type coursework. So this puts some value on that. And then finally, the cost of living increases for the first year would be 2%, 2 and 1/4 for the second year, and 2% for the third.
Thank you, Kendra. So that is exactly what we negotiated in the executive session. This is our opportunity to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I move that we execute the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wilmington and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1370 for the period of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018.
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
You want to sign it after?
Okay. We'll sign that at the conclusion of the meeting. And the last item for discussion is a board to consider the request of the Wilmington Rotary Club to use Rotary Park for a community ice bucket challenge on Saturday, August 29th at 10:00 AM.
So this has been reviewed by Public Works, Public Safety. They're all very comfortable with this, no objections to it. We've also checked in with Little League to make sure it doesn't impact any of their games, and it does not. This is an opportunity to raise money for ALS, and I don't know if anyone saw the news that it come out a couple of weeks ago about the ice bucket challenge last year, but so much of that money actually went directly to research and to helping people with ALS. It really is a great, a great event, a great opportunity to raise money directly for that. So there are no objections on this side.
Great. I'm glad to hear there aren't any because this seems to be, there's a flyer that the petitioner, Chris Neville, attached to this request, and I'm sure the flyer will be all over town in the next week or so. So I hope people will attend it and participate and donate, frankly. So I'm sorry, that was a little bit premature. I should probably ask for a vote and an approval of it before I ask people to be supportive of it. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to grant the request.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. No further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Is there public comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Law.
Chairman, I just want to say one thing. It was spoken that the empty property update that Selectwoman Judy mentioned. I just want to say that Judy has done a phenomenal job guiding the whole group to get this off the ground and going. And I personally am excited about it, super glad I'm on the committee, but I also want to say that on that committee are unknown, very talented, and I mean very talented townspeople, town employees. Kendra being one of them, Jeff, I'm just going to name them too because all the other ones I'll probably forget. Don't want to do that. But I just need to say that, and Judy mentioned it in her presentation, behind the scenes, what the town employees are doing to get this. I think the public needs to know that, that Jeff and Kendra have done a great job of getting some very talented people behind the scenes helping us in getting that project going as quickly as I think it has gone. So I just want to say that publicly, and I can't wait for the fundraising to begin because I think the community is going to be behind this, and I think we're going to hopefully make that million-dollar goal and go over that million-dollar goal. So we've got great townspeople in town and businesses, and I look forward to that part of it. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you very much for saying that. I think we sometimes take for granted the hard work of so many people in Town Hall and around, and it's worthwhile for you to say that. I appreciate that very much.
Judy did mention that the citizens like myself and Kevin, not only that, they're a great group of people, but I can't say enough about the town employees who take up their time. I don't know, they take up a lot of their time because we've had a lot of meetings, and I'm only at the regular meetings. I know that she and Jeff and Kendra have been behind the scenes getting a lot of it done with Jamie and Valerie and Paul and Debbie and everybody and others.
Indeed.
Yeah. And Shelley, Shelley's on it too, so it's everybody, all the townspeople that are on that. Just look it up and you'll see the people I'm talking about and the hard work that they have, and along with the citizens that are on it.
Do they know it? Much obliged. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Very good. Thank you very much. Sorry, I blasted over. Let's go to new business and committee reports. And Judy, we heard from you on the Yentile, or do you have anything else from your perspective?
No, I just wanted to say thank you once again for the opportunity to present. Obviously, we're going to be meeting again soon as a committee. We don't have a date. I end out yet. I also wanted just to acknowledge the Sheriff's Office camp that was hosted for Wilmington, but I'd like to not spot my colleague, but defer to my colleague because Mike actually attended the graduation, so I don't want to say more than that, but I just think that that's a great opportunity for our community to participate, and I'd like to defer to my colleague if he would like to make any comments, but that's it.
I'd just say, thanks. Just lately, I've had a little bit more free time lately, so I was able to attend. I mean, I've been on the board since 1987. It's the first time I've ever attended because obviously owning a restaurant on Friday and Saturday really prohibited me to do a lot of things. But it was a great time, it was a great, exciting time, and the sheriff did an outstanding job by putting that on. There was a lot of good folks that I got to meet, one of your relatives there, I told you earlier, come up and I said, your auntie's a wonderful person. I want to let them to know that. I said that. But it was a great time. A little, you know, afterwards, it was a great presentation. The sheriff did, really, the first time I ever met the sheriff, and I think he's a classy individual. He did a great job, and it was really, I really look forward to maybe going next year as well, maybe with Judy. And it was a great time. They do a lot for the kids, and it was really excitement. And we had a couple of Wilmington firefighters there, a couple of Wilmington police officers, but in general, the correction offices, all the first responders are there, and they do an outstanding job, and it was really a great, great time, and I enjoyed it. It was really fun. I brought my son Chris as well, and he had a fantastic time there as well. And as we're talking about committee reports and new business, the only thing I'd like to say is I know we received a letter from Senator Ta, and I understand kindergarten is very important in this community. We lost a lot of the funds, but it did get reinstated. And I think we should not only send a letter to represent Senator Ta, to our two state reps, because also with their vote was able to fund that money back because it means a lot. Kindergarten, you get folks dropping the kids off to kindergarten where most communities pay for that, residents pay, and now the, you know, the parents out there working, you know, supporting their families, and one complements the other. And it's important to do that, and I'm glad to see that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Judy.
Indeed, yeah. But thank you for bringing that up, Mike. And on the sheriff thing, I'll simply concur. I regrettably couldn't make it on Friday, although I was scheduled to be there. I'm so glad, Mike, that you were able to go and represent the town there, so thank you for going. You know, Sheriff Katusian, years ago, when he first took the office, had an opportunity potentially to scrub the program. He didn't necessarily have the funding that it needed to continue going, but he prioritized it and found it and got support from it throughout the state and throughout the district. So I hold him in very high regard. I think that's a great camp. My kids have gone through it, now they've grown out of it, but I think anyone in Wilmington who has young children should look into that next year because it's well-run by great people, and the sheriff's a good man for keeping it going. Additionally, I want to acknowledge that, just to share with you, Judy, and to the other members when they catch the coverage of this, Mr. McCoy and I have met a couple of times, or we've spoken a couple of times and met individually, and we've met with Jeff, and we are in the process of putting the final touches on a, what we hope will be a contract that we will recommend to the rest of the board to consider for Jeff Hall. So stay tuned for that. I think probably by the time we meet again, hopefully we'll have an executive session, we can start to hammer out those details, but we have made some progress in that regard. And lastly, from me, I had the great honor and privilege of attending the Eagle Scout presentation. Young man Brent Johnson achieved the high honor of Eagle Scout yesterday at Camp 40 Acres, a great young kid. The presentation and the delivery, the ceremony is quite impressive, and what he did up at Camp 40 Acres is also quite impressive, revamping the camping area and the fire pit area up there. quite impressive, revamping the camping area and the fire pit area up there. So, I just want to congratulate him and his entire family for this high achievement. I was very proud to be there representing the town. That is all from my perspective. New business and committee reports.
One other thing, Chairman, is just the fact, I can't even believe I'm saying this, but realizing today's date, I would just say, welcome back to school, kids, because by the time we come back, they'll be back in school. How scary is that?
You're just mean. That's your call.
Yeah, I just totally mean.
But, you're right.
I mean, that is scary.
To that point, though, let's tell people, you know, be careful out there. By the time we're back, the buses will be on the street, and the kids will be waiting for the buses, so let's be careful.
As a parent, I'm actually counting down the days.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. They're on vacation. Yeah. So, I'm like, mean lady on the.
Important dates, Kendra.
Thank you. So, just as a reminder, Sundays through October 11th, Farmers Market at the Town Common Parking Lot, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., still going on. August 11th is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, scoping session on the Kinder Morgan Pipeline Project. Again, that'll be at Drakehead High School at 7 p.m. August 16th, Town Beach closes for the season. The gates will be unlocked after that. August 18th, the High School Building Committee is meeting in Room 9. It's right here at 6:30 p.m. September 1st, school opens, grades 1 through 12. September 2nd is brush drop-off at Old Main Street, 8 a.m. to 2 p.m., and again, September 5th, from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. I'm going to skip over the next one. September 7th, Labor Day, town offices will be closed in observance. September 8th is first day of kindergarten, which will still be full-day kindergarten. September 12th, we just had a little miscommunication on this. September 12th is when the library resumes its Saturday schedule from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. September 13th, the Hardened Tavern is doing an open house. All are welcome from 2 p.m. to 4 p.m., and September 14th is the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen in this room at 7 p.m.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.